For the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please also join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We are attempting to patch in Supervisor Ung on the phone. Supervisor Ung, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. My apologies for not patching you in upstairs as we had another caller and I will own that. So thanks for being here from, where are you currently?
On my way to Laos.
All right. Safe travels and thanks for joining us. The first order before the board tonight is approval of the agenda.
I'll move it.
Motion by Raddig, second by Nelson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have an item that I'd like to add.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had mentioned it.
Clerical correction to the agenda. And this is in regards to the December 6th, 2022 board meeting. There was a clerical error in the notes regarding the funding for the FFE, for the Law Enforcement Center, and the amount of $941,000. The notes stated it should be paid out of the fiscal year 23 CIP. The motion was clear that it was to be funded from ARPA, so I wish to amend that item.
So you're asking this to be on tonight's agenda?
Yes, if we could just add this after the consent agenda.
Okay. Is the agenda, I would move to amend the motion to include an item correcting the minutes of the December 6th, 2022 meeting, adding FFNE in the amount of $941,000 coming from ARPA rather than FY23 CIP. If I can have a second to that motion.
Second.
So, motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger, amending the original motion to approve the agenda. Is that all? You're welcome. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Supervisor Ung, you still with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Did you hear that motion?
Aye.
And the motion passes five to zero. Tonight's consent agenda is items two through six, constituting a consent agenda of routine action items are considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. And number two is approval of the minutes of the November 7th, 2023 meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four is the Deputy Commissioner of Elections, Steve Hoffmeyer. This is to receive the appointment of Thomas H. Peterson III as a kidren township trustee to fill the vacancy left from the passing of Larry Link. Number five, Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. This is A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B is approval for the vice chair to sign the 2024 Wellmark renewal. Item six, Secondary Roads or County Engineer, Mark Nara. This is the approval of the underground utility permit for Dan Lee and to direct the chair to sign the permit. Are there questions or is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. We're not going to take up an item that was added to tonight's agenda, which is approval of amending the minutes of the December 6th, 2022 meeting for FFNE in the amount of $941,000 to come from ARPA funds rather than from FY23 CIP. I'll lead off the discussion by just asking the auditor's office and our budget analysts reviewed the audio and the motion that was passed by supervisor and seconded was for that specific language.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I will move that.
So my question is then, how much are we changing then when it comes to, say, item eight now on the agenda? Because we did allocate the $941 from ARPA then for FFNE.
It doesn't have any effect because we had extra money in the ARPA funds to fund the $941. Out of ARPA funds is ARPA project number 13, so ARPA project number two, which is the standard deduction, does still have the $941 there available.
So to piggyback off of Supervisor Addick's question, if the board, and I'm not suggesting anyone, but if the board doesn't pass the item eight tonight, there's still $9,59,000.
Correct.
Okay. So it was a different division of ARPA that the board was doing that?
Yes, we had ARPA funds on hand, so that kind of ate up the rest of our ARPA funds. We only got about $467,000 left. But there will be some projects that will fall less than what we budgeted, so those will have to be reallocated down the road here. But we have this next year till December 31st, '24 to get all the allocations out. Doesn't mean they have to be spent. They have to be spent by fiscal year or calendar year '26.
Do you have anything to follow up or is that answered?
No, I'm just curious there because I can remember then, was it the same? My question is, are we trying to spend the same $941 twice?
No. No. The $941 is still available on the standard deduction that we're talking about later here.
So I had a motion that was just hanging out there, if anyone else.
Oh, I'll say.
Okay. Thanks. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. Item eight, Board of Supervis-- oh, I'm sorry. Item seven, Deputy Commissioner of Elections, Steve Hoffmeyer. This is the first year canvas of the November 7th, 2023 city school election.
Okay. Hi, I'm Steve, Deputy Commissioner of Elections. I've got the canvas report here, the abstract of votes and the winner certificates for you to receive and to sign. This is the results of the city school election. We had four provisional ballots that were cast during the election. Two of those were accepted, two of them were rejected. One, because the person did not provide ID. The second one was rejected because the ID that they had presented was expired, and they never came back with any, with a current one. We had 18 after-election ballots. 16 of those were rejected because they came in too late. They have to be here by 8:00 PM on election night. Two of them were accepted and those were the safe at home. Those have an exception. They have until the following Monday at noon to come in. So those were on time.
So you're just looking for a motion to receive?
Mm-hmm.
So move.
Second. Motion by Raddig, second by Nelson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. Looks like we'll have a lot of signing to do. So as you get those, want to pass them our way. Appreciate it very much and appreciate what you do. Item eight is Board of Supervisors, Matthew Wong, and Finance Director, Dennis Butler. This is approval of reallocation of $941,000, ARPA funds, standard allowance to the Law Enforcement Center project to assist in the completion of the project. I'm not sure who would like to start.
Let's start with Matthew.
Okay. Supervisor Ung, you're up if you can, if you can begin.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
My understanding is, and Mark can add to this if he likes, but my understanding is that the OAC authority has received an October invoice from Hausman Construction, which is the monthly draw that's typically paid. The issue is that this needs to be paid by the end of the month of November. It contains some items that we'll be pushing back on legally in regards to the delay of the project in the design phase. But there are certain items, particularly the payment of subcontractors, that do need to be paid because additional work has been done regarding the issues. Regardless of who's at fault, we still have to purchase materials and pay employees to furnish the building. So the reason this is on the agenda is because this is not a use of borrowed funds. This is a use that the board has supported in the past. This is from the standard allowance from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which do not impact property tax dollars and which we think should be reallocated in order to frankly pay for the invoice that is due right now so that we are not in breach of any contracts ourselves.
Anything to add before we go to our Budget Analyst, Dennis Butler, or to any other board commentary? Supervisor Ung?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that opening. Dennis, do you want to talk a little bit?
I did receive from Shane from Baker Group, an itemized list here of all the potential change orders coming up. They're through changeover 106. The total cost amount requested this month was $1,59,001.34. They did approve a change order Monday for $34,176, which on a report I give the board each time there is a change, I'll go through that. So $34,000 plus the $1,59,000. Now, some of that's disputed. There's discussion on that. But there's also another $182,617 on change orders that have not been approved by the authority. Four of those change orders do not even have a price on them yet. So when we add these all together and the potential of the Hausman fee, we're going to be a little over 1.9 million, probably closer to 2 million. So through negotiation, hopefully that'll be less. We do not know at this point in time. But the $910,000 would be shifted over to the LEC, which would then change our numbers on the report I give the board each week if there's a change on expenditures or revenue. Also, any money sent over, the caveat is, or stipulation fee, that any funds unspent at the end of the project do revert back of these type monies back to the County Board of Supervisors. We have not included the $250,000 from the construction of the maintenance shed because that has not been approved or disapproved by the board. So the numbers I've given you here on this sheet here, the weekly update, unfortunately Matthew didn't have this, but we do have $614,143. The reason that is less than the last time that you'll notice, Baker Group does include the November fee down below of contractual obligations. It also includes a change order that was approved by the commission Monday. So those numbers are reflected in the amount outstanding. The expenditure did not change. We have not issued a check. So right now there's $614,143 left. With the $941, that'd bring it up to $1,500,000. That still won't cover potential. I explicitly say potential. We do not know at this time, but we got enough money there to cover a lot of it. Then you add the $250,000, and we're getting close to the total amount of the $1,900,000. That's actually change orders. A lot of that's being disputed. Some we got to pay. But at least we have the money sitting there. Again, the $250,000, the commission's got to decide one way or another, so we know where we're standing with that money. Now, if there's additional funds needed, we're going to be, you know, we exhausted all the standard deduction, we exhausted all the money on hand, and we also exhausted the $250,000. The county will have to come up with money somewhere. But it shouldn't be a big amount, but we're hoping we don't get to that point because a lot of this will be, you know, recovered somehow or negotiated down. Now, also not including the totals here on the sheet here that Shane provided are things like certified testing, Stefan. There's tests out there they have to do. Those are costs that are not included anywhere on any of these numbers. So those are additional costs. They will be coming. We just don't know how much they are. So we're recommending move the whole $941. Don't piecemeal it over. Just get it over there. Hopefully we'll get a lot of it or some of it or all of it back. We do not know at this point in time because there's a lot of issues involved here.
Yeah, so essentially, any of the money that the LEC has comes from the county. Right. So we cannot create more that we would like to have. And so what we're staring at is this, is this bill from Hausman. We've been able to separate out about $864,887. That is work that has been completed by subcontractors out at the LEC, whether it's work that's been completed or materials that they had to purchase to do that job. And that's a bill that we, we're comfortable paying, that we need to pay to not breach our contract. The remaining $1,46, we are still in negotiations with Hausman and Goldberg because we disagree with that amount, and so we're going to continue to, to talk about that. However, we need to really pay the subcontractor bill next Tuesday. The LEC has a meeting scheduled for Tuesday. And obviously, only having $614,000 in the bank is not enough to cover $864,000. And so that's why we are requesting some additional funding from the Board of Supervisors. As laid out from Shane, currently we're looking at about $182,000 in additional change orders that are going to be coming down the pipeline. And so we're going to need to have enough money to cover those change orders. And then, so we have some monthly fees such as our, our contract with Baker Group, which is $34,000 a month. We have a contract with Certified Testing that's doing inspections and testing work out at the project that we have to have. And then we have legal retainers, whether it's Jody McDougall or Alaric Cooney, so we have some legal expenses as well. So that's kind of the basis of all this, and I'll get back to signing and listen to what some of your others have to say.
And Mark? Also, there's all that $182,000. There's still four that are not priced yet.
That's correct. There's four change orders that haven't been priced yet. Yep, correct.
Don't add to that total.
Do we have any idea on what we're looking at or?
I don't even know what the change orders are.
Okay. Other board discussions, Supervisor Addick?
I guess in general, in a new project, you don't see typically that many change orders. Can we get any kind of details on what these impending change orders are?
There will be. I mean, when, at a meeting, I mean, we talked, we talked about all these, but I haven't seen any of those yet. And I'm not, we're not here tonight to discuss these change orders. We just wanted to supply that.
I mean, we are. I mean, because we're talking about paying for them, so.
Eventually, we may have to. I mean, these change orders have to be approved at, at an LEC meeting. You know, right now, the big basis is this $864 number for the subcontractor work that's happened. That's, that's first and foremost what we have to take care of.
Sure, and I guess some of the general frustration, I think, of at least mine, shared by some others, is that as a Board of Supervisors, we don't really have a say on the change orders coming through. And I had voiced, you know, over a year ago, some concerns with that, where I would not have necessarily approved some early on. So I guess if I'm being asked for more money, I'd like to know what those impending ones are for. Now, I'm also trying to do some math here, Dennis. So we got $614,143 in the bank, right?
Yep. Yes.
And we're asking for this $941 today. So that puts us at 1.555,143.
Correct.
Yep. All right. So on this sheet, 1.911 million, that's outstanding, not any of it's paid for?
No.
And then another $182 on top of it?
Correct.
So we got at a minimum almost 2.1 million out there.
Potential.
And we're only going to have 100 or 1.5 million basically to pay for.
That is correct.
So we're going to have to also come up with another $545,000.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. It depends on our negotiation or how Goldberg and Hausman, how that negotiation shakes out.
This is the worst-case scenario.
Okay.
That'd be, yes, that'd be correct.
That is good for the public to know. This is a worst-case scenario.
Yes.
We got to fork over the nine. We're giving back the $941 we took back earlier.
Yes.
Okay. It's not an increase.
No, just gives us back to status quo what we were.
Right. So we give the $941 back. We're still at a worst-case scenario, 445,000 short.
Yes, but you also have a $250,000 hopefully will come back from, so you can cut that almost in half.
That $250,000 we got to take out of there. I mean, that needs to be done.
Right.
So.
So then you're down $250,300,000 short. And that isn't saying there may be more change orders. There's four not priced. I don't know what those amount to. And any additional costs, say like Baker Group, $34,000 a month, that's figured in now. But if they're here for December, January, February, there's another $100,000 there. So there's costs that still aren't showing up here. They're potentially realistic costs coming down the road. So it could be more than 500,000. It could be 600,000, 700,000 potentially. I want to say that because that $1,900,000 is debatable. But this is the worst case.
Right. So can I offer a little bit of a different perspective?
Yeah.
So the $941,000 going back being status quo, is only status quo when it was a duplication of $941,000 times two. In other words, we'd paid for something twice, right? We said we're going to pay for furniture, fixture, and equipment from $941,000, but we'd done it twice. And so when we deobligated it, and the board supported deobligating it, it was for a reason. Now we're suggesting giving it back. My only heartburn is, it's like, this is the maximum amount of money we can possibly give with the hope that, well, it'll just revert back and come back to us. When I add up the, the $864,887 and take off the $614,143 and the $250,000 for a maintenance shed, which I think we know is not, is just not going to be built. That's, you know, pretty clear. Then we're at basically zero. And I realize there's still $182,000 out there, but I, I worry about giving nearly a million dollars. Hausman's million, over a million dollars on the fire, I think you guys are clearly saying is, is not appropriate. So my, my heartburn in this is, it's like, we're going to give nearly a million dollars as a, a fund, and then if you go through it, then just give us back what you don't spend. Is there any sort of compromise where they will give you $250,000 more tonight, which clearly takes care of all of these change orders, pays all the subcontractors for Hausman? And, you know, we live to fight another day, so to speak. But we're not giving, I mean, it'd take one more week of a board action to say, all right, you're requesting another 300,000. You know, I feel like we're ceding a lot. I want to make sure the subcontractors get taken care of. I want to make sure the change orders that they're, they're needed. It just feels like a lot with the, you know, scrutiny that we've had. Just to send, okay, here's another million. Hopefully we get back whatever you don't spend.
Well, I think it's up to us to scrutinize a little bit where this money is going. We can't, the board or myself, that I have any authority on these change orders, not that that's part of constructions, we hired them to do it, or we sat up to the LEC to do it. And eventually, we're going to have to come up with money somewhere, and this is probably the proper place to come up with it. I hate to go back to, you know, if they run over all this money, need more money, then we're probably talking general basic reserves or some other type of funding somewhere within county. Doesn't matter where the money comes from. It cannot come from debt service generate tax dollars.
But I want to be clear on this. They can't spend what they don't have.
That's true, but I hate to get to the point where we have to write a check and there's no money in the bank, and then we don't have the money there, and we're scrambling for a special media transfer of the money over.
Right, but I guess my whole point is this. If it comes down to, do we, do we approve this? Do we have the money to do X, Y, or Z, and there's no dollars there? They can't obligate the Board of Supervisors with money that is not there, so.
If they're legitimate expenses, yes, they can.
So they could spend a million, 2 million, 3 million dollars more.
If it's legitimate. They just can't go, nearly willing, go out and start spending money like people. This is what they've turned to us, potential litigation, you know, or compromising and all these. Plus, there's other costs involved besides all these numbers too, that I hate to get into, us to get in a position, or them get in a position where they have to have a check cut, you know, before a board meeting, transfer the money over. It makes sense just to have the money there, and we know what the expense would be now that there's extra expenses here. I think they're going to have to justify back to get more funding from the county.
That's kind of what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, they just can't go spend it and come back, hey, we need more money. There's a relationship here.
And, and I agree with what Jeremy said, and what's really tough in this argument, right, is, so on an accountability side, it looks good to the public. Anytime that we're going to have a change order or expense, now that we're pretty much out of money, that we come before this body and say, hey, this is what we're, what we're spending. This is what we got to have, right? And I, that's, I'm totally fine with that. On the flip side, though, is that if we approve spending here, we can't just run upstairs and write a check. And obviously, we're trying to keep this project on pace, and there's been times where we've needed to meet very short-term, which is why we had that Monday meeting yesterday, was to approve the purchase of some equipment that we needed for the cells. And so you could run into a potential problem pretty easily. It's happened already where it could be almost 10 days before we could actually meet to prove an expenditure after we've come here to get the funding. And so we're kind of damned if we do, damned if we don't, right? If, if we, if you guys just, if we hand over money that sits in the account, we'll have some that'll say, well, we're being irresponsible with the money. But then if we come and ask for every bit of change to buy something, you'll have those that say, well, why are we holding up the project? Because every time they need to spend $5,000, they have to go ask for it. So I definitely understand, you know, both sides of that. And, I mean, there's, there's, there's five of us that are going to vote tonight, and so I'll look for the rest of the input. But that's definitely one way to think about it is, is exactly that. And maybe there's some middle ground there, but I, I know in the past that we've, we've run into issues where we've, you know, by the time we had a meeting and it moved the ball, it, it took time. I mean, it took a week or 10 days that we lost, that we could have done it sooner had it been there. So just something to keep in mind, and I'll yield to some of the others here, so.
No, appreciate that perspective. Joshua, you had lit up your microphone, and so I took that as an indication.
Well, I did turn my mic on at the point where Dennis said that he felt that the authority could obligate funds, and maybe I misheard you, but it seemed to be to the effect that the authority could obligate money, that the, that the board would then be required to pay. Ultimately, I don't think that the board can, that the authority can do that. They need to work in conjunction with the board, but I don't think that they can go out and spend money, and the board's not legally obligated to spend something that they haven't agreed to beforehand.
The problem is, the only funding mechanism they have is Woodbury County. But I think in cooperation between the two groups, they say, oh, we got this big expenditure. They anticipate that they communicate through Mark to the rest of the board saying, we need more money, and then justify it.
Right.
They still are in charge of building the building.
That's, that's true. I think the idea is, do they have to do that beforehand? Or do they have to come afterwards and say, this is how we spent the money? In other words, give us a million dollars, and then once we go through that, we'll tell you later on the justifications for it? Or is there some sort of middle ground? I don't want to nickel and dime, and I don't want, you know, come down for $5,000. That's not the point. The point is this wide swath of, you know, I'm just trying to find some balance because it seems like that's the only thing this board has control over with the project. And I get it, we ceded some of that authority.
And Mark mentioned also that the expenditure may come up. They have to pay, and our timing, it's a timing issue. Getting back to the board, getting approved, a transfer, and they may be holding something up that needs to be ordered, something like that. Getting back to the board, getting approved a transfer, and they may be holding something up that needs to be ordered, something like that, I'm not sure.
And then, again, you know, like, so, this PCO ninety-two R, uh, the thirty-four thousand one seventy-six, and I go through some of the, uh, documentation on the LEC's website. Uh, says, cost has gone up ten thousand for labor and seventeen fifty for material in that year. Again, I, I don't think it's our job to be giving change orders if there's costs related to labor going up or materials going up, that's, they bid the contract, you know.
But this will be up to the LEC, not the board. They're building the building, we're funding it.
Right.
They're our conduit to get this thing done.
But we, we still gotta be, they still have to be reasonable, you know.
And on change orders, I don't know, Mark, are these change orders things that were unexpected? Like, referring back to ten thousand increase?
I don't know.
Sorry, sorry. So, the one that we approved Monday was actually mostly, um, components, um, for the back of the cells that will allow the command centers within the jail to turn off the water to individual cells if they're trying to flood their cell from a toilet or a sink, that sort of thing. There was a discrepancy in the plans as far as the materials needed for that, and that's why there was a change order. We're not adding anything new or, or changing anything, there was just Hausman and Goldberg disagree on that particular item of, if it was strictly laid out in the plan as far as what components, what hardware they were gonna need to, um, supply that. Now, Keith, and I, and I'm not looking at the same one that you are, but there was a credit because they did bill us for labor, and then there was a credit for eleven thousand off of that.
Okay, so the credit is to make up for the fact that when the original labor was bid?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Very good clarification.
And that's, and I'm, no, I'm glad you pulled up, and I'm, I was glad to answer that, but, so, you know, some of it's.
Well, because this is a criticism we get.
For, no, for sure.
So, uh, I mean, this was bid twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I, I don't remember the exact.
Yep.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, and I guess Dan was there yesterday, but yeah, Shane explained that he caught that, they said, no, this labor was bid in there, and that's, and you're gonna give us a credit on that, and so that's what that eleven.
Absolutely, 'cause we should be getting a credit for that, because.
One hundred percent, yep, yep.
That's, that's not our fault after the fact.
And I, and I can't speak for some of the, I'm sorry, Jeremy, just, um, and I can't speak for some of these future ones, 'cause I haven't seen them, but I know some of the ones that have come through lately, a lot of them are hardware-based, of just some things that we need to finish up, it's not, we're not redoing a room, or, you know, add, you know, adding a wing on or anything like that, they're just, you know, they're some items. But, uh, again, I don't know that these change orders are gonna be set to be approved even next week. Have you heard anything, Dennis? I haven't heard that they're even on there for next week. Uh, I don't think so. Um, but, uh, for sure, the eight sixty-four, we gotta cover.
Yeah, I guess I'd say one of the most frustrating things, 'cause you pay for experts upfront, you know, when you hire them upfront, you don't expect to have to, you know, do that many change orders. I mean, that's part of paying for a premium in the design, hiring specialists, um.
I agree.
So.
Toward that point, do we know, and I know you're a little bit Johnny-cum-lately to this, um, by approval of this board being the appointee, uh, but, do, oh, thanks. Do we know how many change orders have been denied, where they said, you know what, that's, that's inappropriate, we're not gonna approve that, or? Or is it typically, okay.
That, that I don't know, yeah.
I was just wondering if it's typically like, all these change orders come through, and it's just kind of.
You know, you got negative change orders, you know, where we've, you know, not done work in certain areas that were in the plans that we just, you know, said, no, that was just wasteful to paint that hallway, or, you know, do whatever, uh, but I, that information I, I wouldn't, Jeremy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it makes more sense to, uh, plan ahead for these eventualities rather than forcing them to continually come back. As, as has been mentioned, there is limited oversight, and I don't know that there's a concern that anything is, uh, not critical at this point in the project. Uh, when we approved the original ten million from ARPA, we had the same understanding, uh, obviously, that anything that was not spent would come back to the county, that it's simply an obligation, and that the funds are actually spent when they're reported to the US government, uh, on those periodic reports. So, and then also, there's other costs that'll come down the pike, such as legal costs. I mean, we're talking about a lot of things being recouped, and that's gonna take a lot of time, not just from our county's attorney, but from the LEC's authorities attorney, and some of those costs we, obviously, prior to this week, contributed to as a board of supervisors, and those costs will continue to come in the future. We don't know the extent of those costs, but I don't wanna be in a situation where we're, um, you know, being asked to pay for a legal bill, and it's tied up, and it's causing some consternation on the LEC authorities' side legally, uh, because we've said publicly that we need to be relying on their attorney to work and provide, uh, all the information they can, and they've already sought that from our county, uh, staff.
If I may quit, Jeremy, um, and not that anyone has insinuated this up here, but just so that the public knows, all those change orders are done at the public LEC meetings, and we walk through every single one of them, we talk about every single one of them, and then as authority, we vote. So, it's not, you know, something done, um, behind closed doors or anything like that. Um, what I don't know, to your question earlier, is how many change orders have never even made it to us that, you know, Baker has screened that just said, no, we're not even gonna consider that. I agree with Keith, and it is frustrating, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll just keep trying to screen them as best we can.
So, I assume that, uh, potential change order oh nine eight, oh nine nine, this suggests that the potential is up to a hundred and five total change orders. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
So, there hasn't been a hundred and five approved ones, so, I don't, I mean, I can go back through their minutes and try to see how many were approved, but it looks like there have been quite a few denied, so I guess that's, uh, somewhat comforting for those observing.
So, I, I appreciate Supervisor Ong and his, his comments. I guess my, my heartburn tonight is just ceding nearly that million. I, I get the argument, and I appreciate it, I don't want the project to be delayed at all. I just, I don't know that I'm there with that full amount tonight, um, but I suspect that I'm in the minority anyway. Um, you know, we have, uh, different sources of funds, I think, get us through the subcontractor and think that we could still obligate much more than, uh, what's being asked of us tonight. But I agree with you all that the over a million dollar, um, part of the Hausman fee is inappropriate, and so, um, that's just where I am at. Any other comments?
Well, the only I'd say, I mean, I, I would say, I'm, I'm fine with moving the whole amount. I think it's, I go back to, uh, the Reagan principle, right, trust but verify. Uh, we have Mark on the board, Ong being the meetings, I would just say from this point, um, the LEC knows our intent, and I, I believe we know their intent is to, uh, end this thing in good public light and good stewardship of the money, and so, from this point forward, uh, all parties are engaged and know that we will scrutinize every dollar, so. I would just say, we trust but verify. Give them the money, and let the public know, um, we will watch the ARPA money and be over that, but.
So, I would like to see us do something about the two fifty on a future agenda, you know, uh, as far as that goes, 'cause, uh, that needs to be de-obligated and taken out. That, that was in the lease though, correct?
Right.
So.
It's gonna be amendment to the Hausman contract, taking it back out, seeing if it's not gonna be done.
Yeah.
It can't be used somewhere else. Needs to come back to the pot to help pay for something.
It was an alternate, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think there's any heartburn with that, Keith, and I agree with you, I, I think maybe for Tuesday's meeting, we can try to get the ball rolling on that already. Um, and to Dan's point, as far as being, um, or scrutinizing the money, um, Shane from Baker Group sent me this picture, uh, Monday of the stack of paper that he went through just to get us down to this eight sixty-four of what he felt we needed to absolutely pay. And it's about a four-inch stack of paper, you know, so I mean, it's, it's taken an immense amount of work to comb through all of those bills and statements, and, and they're putting a lot of time into it, um, you know, and I can, I, I can definitely appreciate, uh, what you're saying, Jeremy, as far as being a watchdog of the money, and, and we have to be, and I think, you know, I will continue to be. And I, I think that everything's done at, at a public meeting, and so, we're, we're more than happy to take scrutiny on that. But, uh, I will definitely work on getting that two fifty de-obligated, Keith, and, uh, we'll, we'll continue to negotiate with Hausman on this final number, and, and try to get it down as low as we absolutely can.
So, on the two fifty, do we need to initiate that, or does the authority need to initiate?
Authority needs to.
Okay.
What, what do you mean on?
On de-obligating the two fifty for the maintenance building. I was wondering if that was.
My understanding that was an alternate, and if the alternate to the contract isn't selected, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't actually in it.
It's in the contract.
I know, it's specified in the contract.
It wasn't an alternate.
Actually, an alternate, number two, I believe.
Right.
So, they just need to go back and tell Hausman, not doing it, we need to change the total contract amount from, if it's nine million, down two hundred and fifty thousand.
But then, this board would need to de-obligate the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well, because.
No, no, that'll go into the pot, 'cause you're reducing the Hausman contract, so that reduces the money needed, so that'll be added back on your six hundred and fourteen thousand.
So, it makes the pot bigger, is what we're saying?
Yes.
So that if they end up getting to these, oh, I gave the list back, um, to these other change orders, the, you know, PC, uh, you know, one, nine, the ninety-eight through one oh five, and you start looking at those, um, I mean, there's still not gonna be enough to do all those with that two fifty in there.
Correct.
Like, they're still gonna need another two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Based on, based on what, Keith? Based on this one million nine number?
Yes, so that's again.
But that's a preposterous number, right?
Yes.
Well.
Okay. I mean, that includes, um, over a million dollars that Hausman is claiming that they want outside of the subcontractors, that the LEC authority says, this is, uh.
Yeah.
So, my, that's my worry is, we say, the LEC authority itself says, over a million dollars of this is ballyhoo, and then we say, well, we'll, we'll make sure that you have that money on hand in case you, I, that's my heartburn. And then the other thing I think is, if we're gonna take the two hundred and fifty thousand, and they're not gonna use it, this board needs to say that it's for other purposes, because this board entered into an agreement with the authority that Kenny Schmitz and his people would have some sort of maintenance shed or something or another, and now it's just not gonna be there and can be used for other purposes.
No, they're gonna have to get a trailer to move it back and forth.
Which I don't think is fair to our county people, but.
Yep. For the two fifty, if they de-obligate, or take it away from the Hausman, it'll go back on top of the money that we say is left to spend.
And I think this board needs to decide that, and if the board decides it, I think that's okay, but I just don't know that, and, and Joshua or somebody else smarter than me for certain, can say, if the board can just say, the money that the county said, this is our expectation. For example, for a county maintenance building, cannot be, uh, can be elected not to be used, but you can use it for something else.
Well, it'll be used to cover the costs that's itemized here, if it's needed. If not, it comes back to us.
I, I get it. I, I get it, and it's just a question if, if that's proper.
And that's part of, Keith, when you add this up, we're gonna be about a half million short. Well, the two fifty will cut that in half, that's two fifty, but we are, don't know if we're gonna be short, or we're gonna get money back till a lot of things are resolved here. But the money's there in case they have to have it to pay what's listed here plus their other expenses.
Dennis, was the, uh, maintenance shed, was it an alternate to the contract?
Yes. Yep, it's listed. I can show, tomorrow I can show you where it's listed in there, as an alternate, so if they don't do it, that should reduce the Hausman contract, come back to the county.
So, if I, if I remember correctly, didn't the authority come to the board of supervisors and say, hey, here are the alternates, are you willing to fund these?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, 'cause one alternate is like one point six billion, include like paving, things like that.
There's paving, there was like security fence.
I gotta break down upstairs what that alternate one amounts to, which they accepted.
And I haven't been asked to look into this closely, but I think if it was something where the board was, it was requested of the supervisors, that additional funding for an alternate, and if the alternate's not being built, then that should be returned to the board, or the board could reallocate it back to the authority in, in, in some way, if that was the desire, but if the initial request required coming back to the board. I don't think that the authority would retain control over that. But, so I guess what I'm saying is, I think there's a legitimate potential legal issue that Jeremy's raising that we should look into further.
To bring it back to the county, then the county could reallocate it back to cover costs if we don't have.
If that's what the board wants to do, that's fine, I just don't know that they can just say, no, we'll just do this, you know, there may be another step or two, if that's the desire and will of the board.
Yep. Would you, uh, Jeremy, would you be able if it was half?
Yeah, I, to me, I, I think that that strikes a balance between, you know, again, I wanna, I don't want this project delayed one day by our actions, and yet, I, I think it would at least give us a little bit more, uh, control or, or discussion, and keep the LEC authority ahead of itself a couple of weeks, that's my sense, but I'm, I'm open to the.
Keith, same question.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, I, it gives me less heartburn, 'cause then, um, it takes a big carrot out of the discussions when you just, when you're dealing with your discussions with Hausman. So, like, I, I also have a question on the timeframe of that, you know, because Goldberg and Baker disagree with Hausman on costs associated with that change order. Well, what's the timeline to that being resolved? Is that timeline longer than the completion of the jail itself? Like.
Well, I know that all the parties got together last week Wednesday.
Okay.
But other than that, I, I thought.
'Cause if we gave half of it now, then it's not all out there. And, uh, we can, I don't know, get closer to a, an actual number here in the following month. I would also like it to not come up the week before it's necessary, you know, like, it needs to be paid by next Tuesday.
That we couldn't help.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have to LEC there on that.
Yeah, we had an issue, um, getting timely receipts, and so that's why, um, when we did get it, it was a mad rush to filter through it and get, get to this number, so that's, that's why, Keith, and I, I agree with you, you know, but.
Yeah, I just, in general, I hate approving anything when it's on a serious time crunch, because, uh, that tends to like, change the severity of the discussion.
Well, for that. Right, for that matter, I mean, you can make it a standing agenda item.
And do what?
Just make it a standing agenda item, approval of funds, potential approval of funds for LEC.
If you do half, it's four hundred and seventy thousand, then the other four seventy-one would be sitting there for future possibilities, but still here.
I, I'd be more comfortable with that, I mean, I would support that, and I think it strikes some kind of balance, um, and I appreciate the.
Well, like I said earlier, there's a legitimate concern about the accountability of the money, but then the LEC's ability to pay bills when they come across, so I, I mean, there's, that, I, there's concerns on both sides, I get it. Um, but I think that i- if there's half, we can pay this bill, we'd even have enough for this one eighty-two if it came up, but I think we can, in the, in the meantime, we could try to, or we have discussions on de-obligating that two fifty, where that's gotta go, that sort of thing, and we'll just, we'll stay on the ball as far as coming back here for more money, if that, you know, if, if we can achieve a fiable vote, I think that'd be great, you know, but, so.
Go ahead.
I'll vote for the half, uh, of the proposal. I still don't think it's going to be that useful going forward, 'cause we can't promise there's not gonna be issues next month, and next month, and next month, and, um, but, uh, it does seem like an arbitrary, uh, decision. We don't have guarantees, we can't say this is going to be half. Uh, that doesn't seem to be based on any data, but I'm comfortable voting for it.
Thank you, Supervisor Ong. Well, with that, I, I appreciate the compromise and the suggestion and the understanding too. I mean, even if it was, hey, we need to call, uh, an emergency board meeting, you know, in, in two days, I, I think that hopefully, we'll be able. I I think that hopefully we'll be able, or you'll be able to project ahead a little bit. But I would move to obligate the 470,000 in ARPA funding, standard allowance to the law enforcement center project to assist in the completion of the project.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radick, is there further discussion?
You know, I just, I guess I really look forward to this project being done, and you can tell the whole story, you know? Like you say, you know, we're looking at these list potential change orders, you know, where where the change orders are at, you know? Even if you can say at the end of this project, well, 80% of the change orders were removed, you know, that would be something that I think taxpayers would want to hear because all you ever hear is about the increase in cost. So, you know, those aren't necessarily good headlines. What do you got there, Dennis?
Okay, I got a text here, Ryan Shikup or Shurka from Building Services who worked together on all this ARPA and everything in the building. But he sent me a text here, September 12th of 2023, motion by Taylor, second by Ung to table until October 10th. The action reduced the standard reduction from nine million, 59,000 to eight million, 809 million. In parentheses, $250,000 reduction as authority is not constructing a maintenance building at the new LAC facility carried 40.
What's this point?
Well, I'm trying to figure, every day on the October 10th, this, at the September 12th meeting, it was to table until October 10th. The action I have reduced the standard reduction by 250,000 more than the 941. I guess on the 250, we've already done what you've done, but the 250, you get more clarification if the board actually did that on October 10th. So I'm going to look at that in the morning.
Okay.
So we know maybe we did already deobligate it, maybe we didn't, waiting for an answer from the LAC.
Yeah, I thought we had to take action first, is what I.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
But your, the motion that you, that you shared from him was just a table?
Yeah, just a table till October 10th. So we'll look at the October 10th.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So did we do something October 10th already?
Yeah.
And I I thought that when we got to October 10th that we said, well, let's see what the authority wants to do, is my recollection thing.
That's my recollection too.
So look at that again, Dennis, and report back to us if you would please.
And I will send information out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Yep.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Any none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes five to zero. Item nine is County Sheriff, Judge Sheehan, approval of four new correctional officers and two new x-ray machines for security in the new LAC building.
Good evening. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Winger, but just wanted to kind of give a little background information. We have been working with a court security group that's been meeting for the last several months, trying to anticipate our move into the, into the new law enforcement center. And some things have come up, and that's what we're here to address. But the chief has done most of the work, has all the numbers, so I'm going to let him go ahead and explain it since he knows it in more detail. Judge Todd is also here to perhaps answer any questions if they come up. So, chief?
Like Sheriff said, we've been having the LAC security meeting, and late September, early October, Judge Todd and the other judges brought forward their concerns and their requests that we provide the same security that this building has in the new, new law enforcement center, meaning x-ray checkpoint and officers to man that. And by code 331653, general duties of the sheriff, that is one of our responsibilities is to provide court security if the courts do so request. We didn't have anything, we have done that. With the new LAC opening up and and criminal trials that are held in this building now being held out there, it's probably a good idea. So we are coming to you guys saying, we have, we came up with a plan that we're not going to use part-time. We we are using some part-time here, and it's a struggle daily to keep it staffed, just because the part-timers, they're part-time, they will work when they want to work and they'll move on. And I mean, they do a great job when they're here. I'm not shortchanging them, but we have changed how we operate here. So we came up with a plan that we would hire four correctional officers, two on each day shift, and they would work 12-hour shifts, meaning they would work to 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM that a regular correctional officer works. So they can come in, they can help with the daily headcount in the mornings, they can get it morning started, and at 7:30, they go out to the x-ray machine, work until 4:30, and then they go back until 6 o'clock when they're done with their shift and they can help with the end-of-shift stuff. Also, we've priced out and we got the chief, Lieutenant Hendrickson was tasked with a pricing machine. And we came up with the machine that cost 28,462. It was the cheapest of three. We 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 shopped around. They do like it, but we had the plan of, the machine we have upstairs is no longer supported. If something is to break on it, we're done. The company won't come working on it anymore. They won't guarantee anything with it, which is fine. But if it breaks, we're going to be coming and asking for a machine. So we thought we'd ask for two machines, pull the one we have now into storage, and that would be a backup if we have something go wrong with one of our two. And Keith will like this, but if we do buy two, we do get a $1,200 discount on on the prices, so. I'm here to answer any questions, and I'm sure Judge Todd or the sheriff will will jump in, but go ahead and fire away.
So the, so the 368, that's, that 30,000, is that for one machine or two machines?
One machine costs 28,462. If we buy two, Pat gave me the price here, it's 55,750.
Okay. So out of that 368, 55, 750 is the machines?
Say this again?
Out of the 368,000, the, the total cost is 55?
That, when I gave you that number, that's a rough estimate.
Okay, gotcha.
I know correctional officers' benefits package is 75,075. So four of them is 300,000, just over 300. And then you're, I was ballparking it.
Gotcha. All right.
Is there any value at all in the old machine?
How so, Matt? If you see, yeah, if you're talking, if you're talking resale, I don't know who would want it. But also, we we definitely explore that if 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 you guys so wish.
I'm just not sure that a backup option without support is going to be something we're going to lean on or need to lean on.
Yeah, we can definitely, I know Kenny Schmitz has a an auction site that we put equipment on in the past. We can definitely put it up there and put a reserve and see if anybody, any, anybody's interested in it.
We the second owner? I think we're the second or third owner of it.
TSA for sure.
And as, and as it not being serviced makes it maybe not an ideal backup, it probably makes it a less ideal purchase for somebody to use somewhere else because they'd be buying something. Our thought was if one of these newer ones that are covered needed service and we're going to be down for a week or two at a, you know, at a time, that one could be brought back out, be utilized for that week or two without having to, you know, have any other additional expenses while those are still covered under warranty. That's our thought, but we can certainly explore it. I just don't know how use, how useful it would be for another user that it's not supported.
So is this something that's mandated by the state?
State code. Now, there's sheriff, general duties of the sheriff is what the code section's called.
And I guess we've had discussion on this in the past, you know, of course, the difference between courtroom versus courthouse or the building in question and securing the courtroom where the court proceedings are held, where the judge is, versus securing the entire building. So, I mean, there is that where, you know, there's that gray area. So as a duty of the sheriff, is it the duty of the sheriff to secure the entire building by that code section or the courtroom?
And to answer that, Keith, you're going to pay more if you want the courtrooms secured because that's going to be one man in the, one person in each courtroom for eight hours a day. That's, there's, there's four people a day right there to do that.
And of course, we already have courtroom security, do we not, in our budget?
We have, we have transport, I think that's what it might be called, and they provide security during trials while while they're sitting with their prisoner.
Because we do that here currently, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So do we have people across, forgive my ignorance?
I just want to clarify one thing. I don't mean to break your train of thought, but they do not do any type of checking for weapons or any people. They just are with.
They're inmate security.
They're just with the defendant. And the other thing is, without getting into some of the details, the the entire building will not technically be secured like this particular building because of the number of entrances. But that main corridor beyond our office, so folks that come into the sheriff's office, for example, if you're not sure when you come in that main door, the sheriff's office is immediately to the left. The court clerks, or, yeah, to the right, I motioned to the right, said to the left. To the right, the clerks are on the left. The machine, the way we have it drawn up and have worked out with the LAC authority, they would, they would go through that beyond our office doors. So people could come into our office, they won't have to go through it. But they will, they would have, and will have stanchions so that they would have to go through that to get into the court-controlled areas, the clerk, the court's clerk area, and then beyond that to the courtrooms. But like, for the county attorney's office space in the base, in the basement, that will be a, that's its own little area, if that makes sense. So we really, again, without wanting to get into too much detail of the security, we will not have the entire building secured like this building, but the court area will all be secured.
Are there any, thank you for that, are there any reallocation or resources from across the street that are currently supporting the courts, or there's nobody that is going to be leaving there that can be a help?
We've had, we've had a gentleman's agreement with the court that our presence, there, the alarm system would allow us to respond if anything happened. But we are now introducing criminal court to the LAC, which we don't have right now, meaning the the felony courts that are, we bring across here, they're, they're housing them out there now. So we're going to have a increase in clientele, I guess, is 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 the way to say it.
And of course, I in the past didn't necessarily approve of security here in this building. And if you're taking the criminal aspect out of this building, could you not allocate security from this to over there instead?
Yes, but then if the courts ask for here, back here again, we're, we're required by state code to provide it because there are courts still operating here.
And I don't want to cut anybody off, but I saw the judge rise as well, so it all do differ.
So can I?
Well, I just want to point out something that I think is overlooked a great deal. The danger is just as real in civil court as it is in criminal court. In the last six weeks, I can give you two perfect examples. Judge in Maryland, less than two months ago, murdered by civil defendant in a custody case after the trial. It's just as real. Eight weeks ago, to bring it home here during a 236 protection order hearing in our court, court building, as we're standing here right here today, after people have passed through the metal detectors, the defendant corners the protected party upstairs while they're waiting for the hearing. My staff comes out and splits them up, tries to bring the protected party into court administration, into a separate office. This individual don't care. He came right into that office too, and the sheriff's department had to come to prevent a situation from happening. If there's no metal detector here, there's no way to screen for weapons, we could have had a dead protected party that day. This person didn't care. The fact that he didn't have a weapon with him probably was a saving grace that particular day. The threat is every bit as real in civil court as it is in criminal court. And a year, a year and a half ago, when this project first started, the debate we were having among the judges was, does the metal detector stay in this building or does it go to the new building? And we didn't think this was a possibility. I don't want to make that call because I don't want to be the person responsible for the civil judge getting murdered here because we moved the metal detector out there. And I don't want to be responsible for the criminal judge getting murdered by the gangbanger at the criminal trial because we kept it here. I don't want that responsibility. If we're going to be down to one metal detector, I'm going to place it on you folks to make the decision where it's at. It's necessary in both places equally.
So my discussions with the judge, local judge in the past, I will not name, says, okay, you've got three different courtrooms. And he says, of all of them, it should be placed a juvenile the court, juvenile court. Because when you look at, you know, the kind of cases that happen in there, you're talking about custody of somebody's kids. Who's most likely to really want to kill somebody if you take away their kids, somebody in that court or whatever? So.
I fully support putting one at the Trosperoy building as well.
And so I was told of all the courtrooms, you're least likely in a criminal case because the guy's trying to prove their innocence, last thing they want to do is have somebody, you know, bring a gun and screw up their potential innocence. So I mean, that was something a judge said to me. And of course, you know, I can't speak for you guys or for anybody here on the board as to what they would want to do.
Well, the fact of the matter in that type of situation, Chairman, or Supervisor Radick, if that type of thing happens, it's a mistrial, there's not going to be any presumption of innocence, we're starting over again, and they're going to get a new day in court. The fact, I've grown up in Sioux City my entire life. I've been here for over 50 years. When I was a little kid, if you heard about a murder, you were shocked because it didn't happen in Sioux City. How many murders have we had in Sioux City in 2023? How many stabbings? It's a very, much more dangerous, violent community that we live in, and that's not just here, it's everywhere. And these defendants don't care. I've had people being convicted, charged with murder, being convicted of something less, and being smug as they're walking out of the courtroom and threatening law enforcement as they're walking out of the courtroom, wait till I get up because I'm coming after you.
Well, and we just had an individual that was basically charged with a lesser crime and was back in jail the next day.
Exactly.
So I'm not questioning whether or not people are violent or not or prone to it. I just, I've always felt like the standard for government and the government employees is way different from like what real people get in the real world too. And the same, you know, protection afforded somebody and here, the second they walk out of here, and I can speak for, you know, females that are maybe under protective order with a male individual, there's no protection once they leave the building. So.
That's right.
I mean, people that tend to commit violence aren't going to do it here, they're going to do it somewhere else, but.
Keith, that's what I want to interject, that's where, that's where you're wrong. I'm not worried about the people, the person that's on trial. You're right, but it's the family member of the man accused of rape, the victim, that brings the gun in, is going to try, try and kill the rapist, and then he just sprays, that's, that's what we're worried about. Is, you're right, the person that's arrested, he's in custody. They, they're not going to have a gun. But the family members of the victims, they're going, and I, and I'm, I'm not looking for extra work. This is, this is, the, the court's asking for this, but I just want to clear that up. Whichever judge you're talking to, he, he not telling you the whole story. I don't care about the people in custody. We got them. It's people that are coming in to make sure that their loved one gets justice, and if they feel they don't get justice, they're going to take the law into their own hands. That's what's bad.
Sure.
Uh, I've got a question either for you, Sheriff, for, so you have these part-time folks that are doing security now, so would there be a reduction in part-time hours then?
No, because that's a completely separate entity here at the courthouse. These positions out at the new law enforcement center, we wanted to go away from the part-timers, so the correctional staff, they're, they are not as expensive as the, as the sworn staff. But they are, but they're all very trained, they carry firearms, they, they, they do everything. It's just that they're, 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 their union package, their contract with the county is.
So the part-timers would just stay here at the courthouse?
Yes.
And then your, the four full-time correctionals are out?
Things here would not change at all. Now, if you really wanted to kind of, that, let's say the, let's say the package for the, those correctional officers is 300,000. There's about three hours a day where they're not going to be doing courthouse security, and they will be back in the jail helping. The benefit for us is those are the busy three hours of the day for the shift, at the beginning of the shift when they get there, and they'll be helping until 7:30, and then the beginning of the shift at the. And they'll be helping until 7:30 and then the beginning of the shift at the end. And the reason we did that, rather than going to an eight-hour or a nine-hour or a 10-hour shift, one thing we'd have to change contractual language, we don't want to open the contract, is that it would, it would benefit, there would be that some of that benefit in there. So, I don't know, whatever that is, what's three hours out of 12?
It's about 25%. So basically on an annual, you're going to spend 75,000 in new correctional officer, 225,000 for court.
And the rest will be utilized in the jail, yes. Yep. The other benefit with the two machines being in the, in the two different places is if we were short in one place or the other, staff from either one of the locations could go fill in at the other location and be comfortable running that piece of equipment.
When would you?
Oh, sorry, sir.
So one of the questions I had, and I know this is kind of a floating thing with the completion of the law enforcement center project being a little bit of an unknown.
We'll delay the, I think I know where you're going. We're going to delay the hire until we get to the very last minute. Because now we will have some time to, to need to train the people, but the people that are going to work at the, at the, the check will not be the new person. It will be people who are already fully trained and working. And also the way, and maybe you don't, so they'll, they'll be somebody that's already trained, already certified to carry a firearm, already all those things. It will not be a new person. So we will try to delay the hiring of that person until as late as possible.
So what does that, thank you. What does that mean for us, Dennis, then in terms of budget, assuming that the board is, this is copacetic and amenable. What does that mean for budget to be just, let's say, February 1st, you know, all of a sudden the law enforcement center project is open and here we go. We just basically take that out of reserves if the board would so approve the hiring of one of these personnel?
Okay, with House File 718 or 715, it limits what you can do in general, basic, real basic, general sup with the exempt from that, which is unlimited levy. So for the first year, the costs would have to come out of cash reserves. Fortunately, we do have some extra money that could, that will cover that for this fiscal year. And next fiscal year, it would be fully taxable under general sup, which is unlimited and unrestricted by the new legislation.
So it'd become an out of reserves for FY '24 and then general sup for FY '25?
Yes.
And could we use gaming revenue for the equipment?
Uh, you'd either use gaming or CIP.
How much gaming? We have, we have.
Gaming, I'd kind of leave alone because we got some real issues coming up in the budget. There were funding now that should be over the tax side. I'd leave that alone. I'd do it as a CIP project. It's got longevity of at least five years or longer. It's above our 5,000 threshold.
Well, what is the will of the board or further discussion or anything else, Sheriff?
I was just, I was just going to say, you know, we were here a week or two ago talking about the, the Bearcat machine and I'm not sure anybody's really put pen to paper and, and thought about it, but, but I have. We are saving the county right now about 90,000 to 95,000 dollars a month, starting in September. Because we did, we are not extending our ACH, our medical coverage. We have not extended our food. So we have enough money already in our budget to probably cover the Bearcat. And we will in the next two months for sure with that money that we're saving. It's already been budgeted for the sheriff to, to have, have, you know, to have that money. So if that continues until February or March or April, my guess is there will be money left in our budget. I know you have to probably do something today to say that you're going to cover it under reserves or whatever. I would foresee that that money that we save from now till whenever we get open in the medical and the, the food, the Summit Foods, it's going to be a significant amount. It's, it's just under 100,000. I think it's 90 or 93,000 a month is what Jennifer just ran the numbers for me today. So you, you know, multiply that times the whatever eight months or nine months it's going to be. It's a significant amount of, of money that, that is already budgeted. So I mean, I just, I'm saying you may not ever have to utilize what you're anticipating to use.
There, there may be a MURD grant. There could be other sources of revenue. There could be donations. I'm sure a lot of people out there will donate for something like this.
Oh yeah, no, no, the Bearcat thing. I mean, I, I, that's a separate deal. That, that's, we can put that on the agenda and talk to you. We, I know we have that more than covered. That will not be an issue, but I think even on top of that, there will be enough savings. I mean, somebody do the math, 95 times September, October, November, December, January, February, March, let's just say six months or seven months.
Yeah, they're going to have enough unspent money to cover the costs for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, it will tax for it.
Well, I guess I, I know courthouse security has been kind of a lightning rod issue. But I, I believe in this day and age that it's necessary and, you know, I, I understand and I can appreciate where, you know, going from one to the other and, but I think it's, it's one of these, given the nature of trials and everything that's going on in both buildings. Something that I'm ultimately hopeful will be a protection for law enforcement and our court personnel. So it's kind of where I'm at if others have.
I guess my beef, again, we don't have it over there, but it is needed here now. I still think we got the sheriff's office right there. I, I mean, you guys probably expected this. I'm, I'm not, I'm not upset with anyone here. You're doing your job.
I get it. And, and we're, we're required. So I'm bringing you this to you and I'd be love to say, no, we don't, we don't, we don't want to take this on, but.
Sure.
I feel we need it and that, and we're required.
Yeah. And the challenge, you know, so we got 355, 724 right on the agenda today. I don't have my backup loaded anymore. Yeah, okay. So it's 300 plus the 55, 724. So the 55, 724 is not ongoing. Is there some kind of maintenance fees you got to pay?
Yes.
Ongoing.
That is 4,000 or?
It's.
We didn't, we're, we're not going to go. Okay.
Okay.
There is one that I think the salesman said we don't, we shouldn't want to worry about it.
Okay. Cause of course, people that sell electronics to government have the biggest scam business in the world. You know, it's like every five years service is done. You got to buy all new, even though it's probably going to work another 10. So 300,000 for the staff. Is that hired again? So is that effective July 1st? So under those rates, would it be 309? Considering there's probably a 3% increase or?
I would like to say that we get word from the authority that we're moving in March 1st. We hire them February 1st. So, you know, we, we get some bodies running, but until we get a, a date, we're going to hold off.
Yeah. And then, so Dennis, we've got questionable reserves going into our next budget cycle, right? Cause we don't know how much we're going to deplete necessarily until this is done, correct? Do we have, I, I almost need to come and sit, sit with you for like an hour, but like, do you have any idea where we're going to be if it opens March 1st, if it opens April 1st? I mean.
Can I, can I piggyback on something that you just said? I just thought of this. The 300,000 is really not what we need for the rest of this fiscal year. It's only five months of that 300,000. So that number's significantly lower because it would really only be five months. So.
Well, like you said, you can actually kind of eat it up out of your own budget. It's just us authorizing it.
Right. I, I'm very confident. I mean, the, the best worst-case scenario is that they, they, they say, hey, we're ready to go December 1st. And we don't have the extra three months of saving the ACH and the, the, the other money, but.
I mean, paying for it for the first four months, that's the easy part, right? It's just, I'm just saying the ongoing.
Yes.
And where we're going to be. So I guess that would be something I'd, I'd kind of like to have an idea.
Again, we won't be using reserves of general sub because we can levy the tax for it after July 1st. Current year, we can cover that with reserves if we, on a general sub.
Well, and I don't think we'll need to because we could use their existing funds. Cause. Cause next year we're limited on growth on our general basic to 3%, is that correct? 3% growth?
We levy what we levy currently plus about 500,000.
Okay.
The key is we use about four and a half million through gaming, sale of farm, using cash reserves. We have to make up somewhere. Again, that's where the prisoner care comes in.
Right, right. So we desperately need that revenue moving forward, but, I don't know. It's just a challenge because decisions we make here today, it's, you know, as a board, it's ongoing. Yep.
Now that you say that, Mark, or Keith, I think the turnover that occurs in the facility, the jail, that the, yeah, I think we're going to be able to.
Finance the rest of this year.
Finance the fourth until July without an issue.
But we, but we do need the approval that it will be covered under whatever means you guys decide.
Well, and to be able to hire the positions, it's board approval and everything too. So we need to create it. I get it.
Um, I've got a question. Do you want to talk about? I think it's a good question. Maybe, I may, so what I, so the one that's going to go out in the new LAC, is there a way that the LAC should buy that metal detector and then we could service that, replace it out of the LAC maintenance fund going forward?
Second?
No, because that's furniture, fixtures and equipment that we want to own ourselves, not the LAC. That's just my opinion. We should own it.
But what if, to Mark's point, is there anything that would be prohibitive from doing it?
Possibly not, but where are you getting the money? We just talked a little, about a half an hour ago, we're going to find the money for what we're doing.
No, and I understand, and I understand. It's, it's just moving money around. But what I, my, my thought is, is the maintenance fund money is coming from the revenue from the prisoners. So who better to have them to pay for any maintenance or replacement on a metal detector in the jail than the inmates that we're getting money from? That was my thinking on that.
So just so I'm.
I know it's only 30,000, but.
Yeah. So my understanding, the maintenance fund we're taxing directly 400,000 a year for?
Yes, and that's to be used for specific things.
What about maintaining security?
No, no. That's not maintenance.
So the chief just brought up a question that we could, we could look at seeing if commissary can be used. Which commissary has to be used for the inmates, but technically this is part of protecting the inmates who will be on trial in the courtrooms. We can look at seeing if, if commissary could buy at least the one out there. And we can look into that.
I was actually going to ask you the same question, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Just when you get a thought thinking, well, we're protecting inmates. It's a very narrow window what we can use that for. I, I'm going to have to ask somebody from the state of Iowa to see.
And I'm supportive for both either way. I'm just thinking, you know, yes, yep.
And we kind of, we, that, that was brought up, you know, is this something that the LAC can, but it was never part of the original deal. And so we didn't even entertain the idea of asking because we also knew that they're way scratching to get every penny.
Yep.
Your Honor, will there, there still be some criminal trials here? None, none at all.
And, and I appreciate Judge, your, your comments about just where we are as a society and how things have changed. And I think what's kind of tough for me on this issue is while we're required by code, this code was probably written at a time where you had one really bad person out of, you know, a whole month's worth of, or years' worth of trials. And so it wasn't that big of a deal to maybe have one officer or whatever on that specific day or week of trial. And so the times have changed, but we're still abiding to this kind of archaic rule. I'm totally, I'm totally fine with the security. I just, I just wonder if we need to look at that and say, well, if we're going to require that, we're going to have all the staff and machines now because things are totally different, should there be some sort of compensation to help us with that? And that's just, you know, that's, and that's a question for legislators, whatever. There's nothing that we can do here. But obviously things have drastically changed. And who knows how, how old this code section is. I mean, it could be 100 years old or, or, you know, I mean, we, we don't know. So that's just in my head, this is kind of my gripe, but we're in an unstable world and I think that you guys have a tough job every day and, and we have a responsibility to keep those on the accused safe as well. And so I, I'm, I'm all in favor for it. So. And I appreciate thinking creatively on how, or creatively on how we can potentially pay for that detector out at the LAC if it's from commissary or if the LAC could do it, whatever, you know, but I, I'm all for it. So.
I, I guess my, my question is, is we need approval because it's a, it's a 12-week turnaround. And we need to tell the authority in the Baker Group which machine, because it, for the footprint, so they can provide power to it is, is what we need.
Yep. So the breakdown again is about 225 annual to the security side of it. And then 75,000 more to the correctional officer side. If in the motion, we can, you're, you want reserves as the, or, or existing budgetary items for this year?
I think you could wait on that. When the time comes, they start hiring, then we can make a decision where we want to go and we'll have a better picture of our financial state.
Okay. Cause it does kind of depend like, and I also think it's real early to do it, but I understand, you know, you bringing that up for Baker and where to plan to put electrical in the footprint. But 27, 862 would be one. So obviously we want to explore the potential of the commissary fund for that 27,862. What, what kind of strikes me here is we're looking at 225 to just provide security to this building. And then in our claims, we had the indigent defense fund was 279,000 dollars, you know, that we approved today. And it's like, that's something we have to provide for by code annually. And that's bigger than the cost to secure this building.
Yeah. And I believe what those fees are for attorney fees for juvenile, we hit a base and after the base.
It's juveniles and indigents.
Yes.
Uh, it's just interesting because, you know, like I go through the claims and it's like, oh, that's a really big number, you know? And it's an annual expense for the county, you know? But that expense is bigger than the cost to secure the building. So it's kind of perspective building, I guess, for anybody observing our meeting today.
So doing the math of the 300,000 for the year on the, the four correctional officers divided by 12, multiplied by five months, you, we're talking 125,000 plus the 55, 750, uh, whatever that is, 180,750, is that right? For this current fiscal year we're in.
So I'll make a motion?
Yep.
Or did you have a motion in mind?
Gosh, I hate to even vote for it.
Well, I'll make a motion then, since I know we're, I'm colliding to your right. I would say we authorize the hiring of four new correctional officers and two new x-ray machines for security in the new law enforcement center building contingent upon completion of the building with authorization one month prior to opening date. Is that fair?
Yes, more than fair.
And the fund sources to follow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll see how they come up. We'll work together and we'll figure it out.
Do I need to make an amendment or make another budget request if I find out tomorrow we can use, and I, we don't need the 55,000? I mean, or is it?
And we'll do that in May when you do a budget amendment because Jennifer always moves money from department to department. So we're good.
Perfect.
Okay, that's second. A motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. Is there further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Came around.
The chief is going to retire now.
Uh, thank you all for coming and for your presence, Your Honor. Item number 10, Board of Supervisors, Mark Nelson, this is Law Enforcement Center project updates and general discussion. Supervisor Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to read a update that I got from Baker Group yesterday involving the progress out at the LAC since my last update two weeks ago. And then Supervisor Bitter and I can talk about our visit out to the LAC last week. It has been the LAC's authority's commitment since the beginning of the project to provide. It has been the LEC's authority's commitment since the beginning of the project to provide information once we had the information ourselves and otherwise be transparent. Corrective work is still ongoing in the county attorney's space in Lower Sea after the area was punched during the week of October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Punch lists were completed in the sheriff's office space, court space and medical observation in Upper Sea during the week of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Corrective work in those spaces is ongoing. Punch lists are scheduled for the remainder of Lower Sea, Upper Sea, which is, includes intake. The entire roof and the penthouse over the Upper Sea, the week of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, so next week. All the, I'll, I'll be clear on this. All the fire and fire smoke dampers have been installed. All eleven of the fire dampers previously noted that needed to be wired have been wired, but are not yet landed to control boxes. Accurate Controls is, Accurate Controls, Inc. is still installing the building's security electronics. And the work is ongoing and work continues in all areas of the building. So the, uh, the long awaited fire damper issue, um, we've got all of them installed. Obviously, some of them have to be hooked up and, you know, we've got to do balance and air handling, that kind of thing. But it's great that those are in. For those in the public maybe not aware of what these dampers are. They cut off, they're, they're part of the HVAC system and they're in the ducts. They cut off the air in the, in the presence of a fire. And so they're in the ceiling. And so there's still gonna be work involving painting, cleanup, putting, you know, the ceiling back in underneath where that work was being done. Um, but a lot of the hard work is done. Last Monday evening, Supervisor Bittenger and I did a walk-through out at the LEC. I think we were out there for about an hour and a half. I had previously been out there on, I believe, September twenty-seventh with Chairman Ung. So it was good to go back and compare, um, as to what we had seen or what I'd seen in September. And, um, uh, I, I couldn't believe how much had changed, um, in five, I think, five weeks' time. The, uh, when we talk about the punch list, as we walked through the county attorney's space, the sheriff's office. You know, you, we noticed, you know, little blue Scotch tape all over the place. And those are little places where they had to, you know, fix a crack or fix some paint or a nick on a countertop, things like that. You saw these, you know, sticky notes everywhere. Todd Wick from Baker Group was with us on that tour. And he had his iPad and was snapping pictures of, of more punch list items as we went through, uh, the entire, the entirety of the building. The main hallway, um, was pretty much done. It was, uh, it was neat to walk in the, the front doors, um, down that main hallway. The courtrooms were beautiful. They had those, um, done, the woodwork and the, the trim and the benches. Everything was, was beautiful to see. We went up into the, uh, we did not go up to the second floor of the, of the cells. It's basically the, a cookie cutter of the first floor. But, uh, final painting had gone on the handrails and steps. The, the tables and benches had been fastened down. You could see, one thing I noticed right away is when we were there in September, we talk about Accurate Controls in this, uh, in this document. But, uh, um, a lot of the door locks had been installed, you know, whether there was a keypad or a door lock on, on whether they were an office door, security door, secure, you know, breach doors, all those types of things. You, you had seen those systems installed in some of the control rooms. There were TVs, cameras, or, uh, excuse me, ca, uh, computer monitors, TVs, that sort of thing where they were, they're doing their test work. Um, and so it was, it was great to see all that. And I, I yield to Dan to insert his thoughts and what he saw out there.
Oh, sure. No, uh, I was, I was amazed at the, the immense size of the building, how big it is. Very huge building. Uh, but no, uh, it's gonna be, it's very secure, uh, very, uh, it's very good flow. I'd say our walk through the, the floor plan, how you, how it flows, uh, was very nice. It was nice to see, um, some of the new updated features for our law enforcement officers coming in and, uh, bring them, they bring in people that are in custody, bringing those in and just some of the secure measures. That was good to see for their protection. But, um, but no, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot of technology in that building. I was very amazed at how much technology was, was involved. Um, and just the, uh, the amount, just the amount, this is the size of the project, which is, it's just a big project. And a lot of concrete. I was amazed how much concrete's out, out in that place. But, uh, yeah, so a lot, a lot to get done. But it was very good to, to walk around and just have a deeper explanation of, of how things are gonna flow, what's getting done. There's people there working, but it's, uh, it was just good to see progress, kind of like what you said, Mark, good to see progress going on.
Yeah. One thing about the flow, um, i- i- it's pretty neat how, how the sheriff's office flows, the county attorney's office, the, the judges' quarters and chambers behind the, the courtrooms. The flow for the, for the inmates and the cells and the command centers. I, I, I think the sheriff's team is gonna enjoy working out there. And I think for, whether it's our county's attorney staff or the judges, I think they're gonna, um, enjoy being out there in that building. But we will, you know, continue to, uh, to push our contractors and subcontractors to be out there and continue working. And, and I appreciate the allocation of the money so that we can get a bunch of those guys paid for the work that they've, uh, done. And, um, I guess if there's any questions from you guys, but, uh, we'll keep pressing on.
Yeah, I, I can't wait to get out there myself on December sixth.
We'll keep working on that, Keith. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Any other discussion as related to item number ten? Hearing none. Item number eleven is reports on committee meetings.
Uh, last week, we had the Veterans Affairs Pancake Breakfast down in Sergeant Beluff. That was really at the American Legion Post, uh, had about a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty veterans come out. So it's good. I meet a lot of people, hear their stories, thank, thank, thanking them for their service. And, uh, I have been certified, uh, I may not be a certified supervisor yet like Chairman Ung, but I am a certified pancake flipper, I was told. So, uh, put that on my resume, just FYI. But no, it was just great to see the event and, uh, a lot of the veterans were thankful for the, um, uh, well, how do, how do, how was this? The increased efforts to reach them with benefits and just awareness of what programs are available to them. And just for the county's continued presence, uh, and just valuing them and just their service. So it was good to hear that, that report back. So, but, uh, no, great event. And I encourage everyone to come out, yeah, from the county.
Thank you.
The Conservation Board has found some pickups. If you guys have remembered, they've been trying to buy trucks for, I think, the better part of two years now. Um, and they've finally been able to locate some vehicles. So we're hoping to have a meeting sometime this month to go over some bids on that. Um, and the only thing I have is, uh, concerning House File seven eighteen that Engineer Mark Nara has been really, uh, working legislators over. I set him up with a Woodbury County Farm Bureau meeting last week. I've heard back from several of the directors that were there and were very appreciative of the information you brought to them. Uh, they were unaware of these types of changes. They thought you had it broke down and simplified very well, and they appreciated that kind of information. They will be holding their legislative meetings, most likely the first part of December. Um, a couple of them made the comment, the timing was perfect. So, uh, that's all we can do and we can just keep trying to, to reach people about this issue. And hopefully, we can bring about a change in the next legislative session. So.
To piggyback on that, you know, Mark is probably one of the most thorough guys I know, you know, as far as getting information. He's very thorough. So just to compliment, uh, Simcoe Exec and Simcoe Board of Directors. One met Wednesday, one met Thursday. We did complete the sale of the old building, so that revenue was received into the budget. And of course, a lot of discussion on, uh, you know, for upcoming, our, our CERTS board. When that does meet here in the near future, we'll have our new building, we'll have the revenue from the sale. Of course, just like any organization, we're gonna be flush with some cash, but we also have loans to pay. And it seems to make more sense to continue investing in T-bills, getting five percent interest while paying your loans at three. So, um, again, we were the pass-through on the loan to CERTS and Simcoe for that building. It was CERTS doing the, the building. Simcoe does, uh, own or use something like sixty-six percent or seventy percent. So the, the expenses are split. I know it's kind of confusing on, you know, how Simcoe, CERTS, Simcoe Exec and all these WICRTIF and all these other different boards with them go. But, uh, uh, basically, they're, they're sitting in a good situation because they have that cash from the sale and a nice low interest rate on their loans. So.
All right. Thank you for those updates. Anything from afar? Supervisor Nelson?
No, just, uh, no, just congratulations to Mr. Bittenger on his baby step towards full certification.
Appreciate that, man.
I did, uh, have a question as far as this mission to Laos you're on. Is there any, uh, potential as former Grant Township Commissioner, uh, to opening up trade in the Grant Township?
I will have to get back to you on that.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And if you can come up with a sister county while you're over there, uh, we'd appreciate it. So item number twelve, uh, citizen concerns. Hearing none. Item thirteen, board concerns. Supervisor Nelson.
Yesterday, I had more calls about county business not related to the jail than jail calls that I'd had for a very long time. One even was about fence. So I appreciate a change of pace. Oh, and, uh, I wait for the day that the jail's done.
Well, I just have one. Thank you. I wanna thank you for all your, your work. And I know this hasn't been the easiest to process, um, but I'm, I'm appreciative of the board. You know, we have, uh, sometimes disagreements, but I think they, they're healthy and they're good debates and discussions. And so, um, I think that's attested to by tonight. So. Anything else for the good of the cause?